I believe it is six o'clock, so I'd like to call this to order. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E, the following have been notified at the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN2, and WRHI. Thank you, everyone, for joining. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Well, now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. Thank you, everyone, for joining. You've all received a copy of the agenda. Are there any adjustments or corrections?
Negative.
Alright, then that will stand as approved. I would just make for a point of order that Ms. McArthur was not able to be with us in person. She is listening in with us, and she'll text me if she has something she wants to share with the group, but she'll be joining virtually tonight. We do have some special recognition that we want to start off with. We've got several people here that we want to recognize. I don't know, are you going to start it, or Ms. White going to do it?
I think Ms. White's going to have it.
Alright. Then we will turn the floor over to you. Welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight. Y'all want to just line up?
Yeah, y'all could just line up.
This peekiest spot. Hello.
Just get in front of me.
Yep, y'all going down. There you go.
Good evening.
Smile real big.
Good evening. The first thing I've got to say is, for the love of literacy, even during a pandemic, I would like to thank the school board, and Dr. Epps, and Peter Olinger, and all of the elementary school principals. This year has been like no other school year. So many questions and concerns. First graders were lower than ever. They didn't get a whole year of kindergarten. The kids left on March 13th. We didn't see them again in person. So, there were so many questions and concerns regarding this year. For us, as reading recovery teachers, how would we share the pen? How can we hear students articulate words slowly? This pandemic has taken teaching to a whole new level. I've got a packet for each board member and Dr. Epps, and in there, you're going to find a list of all the trained teachers in the district and their current school locations. I am thrilled with the interest in the class for next year. Applications are coming in daily. We currently have at least one reading recovery teacher at each elementary school. Riverview, Fort Mill Elementary, Sugar Creek Elementary, and Springfield Elementary now have two reading recovery teachers, and we're so thankful for them. So, these ladies have had 33 days of class with Jamie White, who keeps you the entire three-hour class and sometimes a few minutes over. So, when I started adding that up, I'm not really good at math, I'm better at reading, but they have sat in seats with me for over 110 hours. We started the first week in August, and they just got finished with me. So, I just appreciate them so much for their time and effort and their willingness to help our most vulnerable children, their families. They've got kids, their husbands, they're cooking on Thursday nights and thinking they're never coming home. I just appreciate them so much for what they've done for our school system. So, you might think, why is reading recovery so important to the Fort Mill School District? Let me tell you this, an expert teacher makes a difference. There's no doubt about it. Did you know research shows that an expert teacher has more influence over children's learning than the influences of background, socioeconomic status, or even class size? Marie Clay says, "In the end, it is the individual adaptation made by the expert teacher to the child's competencies and history of past experiences that starts him on the upward climb to effective literacy performance." I know we are so proud of all the kids in our school district, middle school, high school, but it all starts in the elementary schools. Early intervention is essential. So, just how does a teacher become an expert? Professionals must continue to learn. The process of teaching reading is complex. It is more than just learning skills in isolation. By investing in teacher professional development, we can increase effective instruction, which also raises the expertise of your school community as well. Reading recovery serves the lowest-performing students in first grade, and they receive an intensive intervention for up to 20 weeks to return to the classroom reading and writing within the average of their peers. Our reading recovery teachers have served more students individually this year than in the past and have had less instruction time in the day. They have made it work by giving up lunch breaks, whatever it takes to try to serve as many kids as we can. My teachers are beginning their lessons by 7:15 in the morning in order to get as many time slots in. So, our reading recovery teachers, they understand the value of consistent daily lessons, and they have connected with students in person and virtually when quarantines were required. Our reading recovery teachers have adapted to virtual lessons when needed. When my teachers have been quarantined, because there were quarantine teachers, the student remained in the classroom and had his lesson virtually with my reading recovery teacher at home. So, my teachers have gone above and beyond the call of duty to provide exceptional instruction to our most vulnerable readers. I almost want to say cheers for the love of literacy, even during a pandemic. I cannot thank them enough. So, now, Dr. Epps, will you help me with this?
Jamie White is exactly right. Reading recovery is very important to the Fort Mill School District. I guess we started the program with just maybe five or so, and it is a real intense program for children who struggle to read in first grade. And all the research is so outstanding on how it improves them and gets them back on. Dr. Fratirelli did one of his research dissertations on reading recovery. So, we put a lot of value into it, but we, the good people make the program, like she said, effective teachers. And Jamie White is outstanding because you can tell in her voice, her love for her craft. And so, I give you credit too for helping these folks along, okay? I'll do the fun part. Do you want me to give them, and you call them out, or how you want to?
You want me, whatever works.
Whatever you want to do.
You call it out, and I'll go give it.
Okay. River Trail Elementary, Blair Wright. Noreen Booley, did I say it right? Springfield Elementary. Courtney Burt, Sugar Creek Elementary. Amy Roaring, Orchard Park Elementary. Lana O'Shields, Gold Hill Elementary. Emily Heitkamp, Springfield Elementary. And Tracy Simpson, Fort Mill Elementary. Alright, let's give them all another round.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do.
That's awesome.
Let them make their way out. Our next item is approval of minutes. There were two sets of minutes included, April the 13th and April the 27th. I know one of them had a slight modification yesterday. Were there any other adjustments or corrections? Alright, then those will stand as approved. Our next topic is public participation. I have seven cards. So, I would suggest, unless somebody objects, I would suggest we go ahead and bring the seven individuals in that are going to speak and have them line up around the room. I don't know that they're in any particular order, but that way, when we call on them, and they can all hear the sort of rules of the road at the same time. Is that alright? If we bring, okay. So, Officer Jenkins, if you would let the speakers know that they are welcome to come in?
The seven.
I'm sorry? Oh, you can. Or just the seven that turned them in? Yep, keep them in that order for me, though. Please. Unless I'm going to go through that, and I just think I do it once. Right, so.
Instead of trying to be fractious.
Right.
The other minutes for transition.
Yep. Y'all be patient with us there on the live stream. We're going to get some folks in over the next couple minutes. We figure we have room to put seven around the room to come in that are going to speak.
Put us recalls of that card.
Yes, please. Give me just one second, if you'll just kind of hang out while we get all seven of you in here, and then we'll go through the process. Apparently, we only have three? Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to put the chair back, please. We have...
You can leave if you'd like.
I'm going to ask you to please put the chair back in the configuration that our room was set up. Alright, we have seven. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so, before we get started, I feel compelled to say, I think most of you are here to talk on the same topic, although one of the cards was a little different, so that it may be a different topic that we have as well. I'm sorry. I will not be taking my mask off. I have a microphone that's projecting. I will speak a little closer to it to see if that helps any. We did get word about 30 minutes ago that there's a new governor's executive order that addresses parents having the option to complete a form that would make mask-wearing optional for their students. We have not received said form yet, so as we have all along, we will obviously be following governor's orders. As soon as we have more information on that, we'll be rolling it out to parents. I know that's what a lot of you are here to talk about tonight. Just some other rules and reminders. We welcome and encourage public participation. We have the agenda item at every one of our meetings. We have a 15-minute window. I believe there are seven of you that I have cards for, so we'll be doing about two minutes apiece. I will call your name up. You'll be able to approach the podium. I have got your names and address on here. I'd ask you to please speak your name and address. If you choose not to, I still have your address information here, so that's fine. We do ask everyone to adhere to the procedures. We will not accept verbal outbursts, personal attacks on any staff or board members, or any other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We respect the right of the members to voice their opinions and provide feedback, but we do have to uphold the order and the business that we have to do here tonight. So, with that, they're in an order that they were handed to me, and that's the way I'm going to go. So, the first one is Michelle Gelsar, I believe. No, I'm sorry. No, ma'am, you may not. So, Michelle Gelsar, no, you may not. I'm sorry. This is the way the process works. So, Ms. Gelsar, would you like to approach the podium?
I got a lot to cover in two minutes. I'm Michelle Gelsar. You have my address. Okay. First of all, the motto of our school system is children first, and you have blatantly not taken our children first. They have a thing called an immune system. It's not a theory, it's a fact. I encourage you, board members, to use common sense and think for yourselves. Our own governor, think, you know, you, what was it, D. Heck? They were blaming it on D. Heck a few weeks ago? Yeah. He even said at the end of that, that he recommended it to be the parent's choice. I also brought a CO2 monitor, and I have information about that. I bought one myself. I'd like, wanted to see what damage it's doing to our kids. And so, at 1,000 ppm, it's at toxic levels. And my reading was 2,895. Let me tell you what that does. Let's see. Okay, health impact news. Mask, this is from Margarita Bryson. She makes cause oxygen deprivation and permanent neurological damage, especially in developing brains of children. Okay? The rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide. Oh, the acute warning symptoms, headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, issues, concentration, slowing down the reaction time, reaction in the cognitive system. I wonder how well the test scores will go up when we take the masks off. Okay, well, my daughter was sent home, and I have that information. I'll present that to the board, that she's been sent home from school. She's come home nauseous for headache, and that is, I'm wondering how many lawsuits will come out of this.
Next up, we have... Our next guest is Stephen Clem, I believe.
Good evening, Board. My name is Stephen Clem. I have three kids in the Fort Mill School District, and I've come to you as a concerned parent. Kind of like to piggyback on what the first speaker was saying about the oxygen deprivation. A little concerned about that, especially for developing brains and developing bodies. My biggest concern is, look around you. Look in this room. We wear masks, we're six feet apart. The virus is not airborne. It's spread by tactile contact, or let's call it spittle emanating from speaking, singing, et cetera. Question is, is this reasonable? You're sitting behind plexiglass. I've done the math on this virus, and this data goes back to the end of February. In the US, at the end of February, there were an overall 460,234 deaths. In the age group from 0 to 24, there were 788 in the United States. That is a mortality rate of .015 for that specific category. Got this data from the Heritage Foundation. In the overall population, the 700 deaths in that age group, 0 to 24, equals .00024. Board, I will take my chances with that math any day of the week and twice on Sundays. It's... I think we need to take a reasonable approach. I think mask-wearing, I consider it highly unreasonable because the science... If any board member can present me with a science, by golly, I'll put a mask on right now. I don't think the science exists. And with that, I yield my seven seconds to anybody else that'd like to make a comment. Thank you, Board.
I believe it's Paun Merji.
Thank you for the time. I want to first thank the Board for all that you've done in the past year to keep our children safe and in school as much as possible. The state has been open for months, and with declining numbers, yet fear grips this community, and it affects us all. Except for a vocal minority, there is a large and growing number of teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and students in Fort Mill that so desperately want to take next steps back to normal, but were reluctant to do so because of fear of either losing their jobs or other reasons. There are many studies showing the effectiveness of masks, but with the expectation that they are replaced multiple times a day with ample time for breaks, like in a hospital. Parents and teachers are concerned with frequent sore throats, strep, fatigue, face lesions, and rashes from extended wearing of warm, moist, and dirty masks. These costs may have been rightly justified a year ago, but what about now, when the number of students and staff with COVID are at 0.17%, according to the FMSD COVID tracker? We have two requests to be enacted, hopefully as soon as possible. One, communicate an official policy that removes the mask requirement from students during recess and while seated in the classroom. Yes, the DOE's mask mandates allow teachers and administrators to make this determination on their own, but some schools and teachers enforce masks outdoors and in-school in-class to extremes with no supporting data. If this Board saw significant disparity among the schools' performance and test scores and graduation rates, I'm sure you'd quickly enact policy to ensure consistency. We urge you to treat this situation the same, and remember that teachers and students can still wear masks at their leisure as they are right to do. The second thing is, we urge the Board to write a letter to the official, to State Superintendent Spearman, that if the numbers continue to decline over the summer, you would have, you would support the removal of the state mask requirement at the start of the school year. In the face of fear, this Board has made brave decisions to take steps to normal and our kids back to school safely. We asked you to continue to keep our children first and face fear with brave decisions to keep our children and our teachers a deserved break from their masks that is permissible by state guidelines. Thank you.
The next card I have is Cindy Zudima.
I have some questions that I think are very important to ask in any situation that deals with the children. Do used and loaded masks become sources of enhanced transmission for the wearer and others? Do masks become collectors and retainers of pathogens that the mask wearer would otherwise avoid when breathing without a mask? Are large droplets captured by a mask atomized or aerosolized into breathable components? Can virions escape an evaporating droplet stuck to a mask fiber? What are the dangers of bacterial growth on a used and loaded mask? How do pathogen-laden droplets interact with environmental dust and aerosols captured on the mask? What are long-term health effects on children, such as headaches arising from impeding breathing? Are there negative social consequences to a masked school environment? Are there negative psychological consequences to wearing a mask as a fear-based behavioral modification? What are the environmental consequences of mask manufacturing and disposal? Do the masks shed fibers or substances that are harmful when inhaled by developing lungs? Does mask-wearing impede a child's ability to pick up on nuances in speech and letter sounds when preventing him or her to utilize the natural benefit of lip reading? Is the deprivation of viewing smiling faces impacting their ability to experience joy? Will mask mouth have long-term effects on children's dental health? These are many potential harms that may arise from broad public policies to wear masks. And I believe that the following unanswered questions should have been answered long before the children were impeded in their abilities to have the most basic human right, and that is to breathe.
The next card is Alexis Carberry.
It is with great regret that we bring forward the recall of Christie Spears, as well as the rest of the school board, due to their lack of due diligence obtaining scientific as well as legal information, documentation, laws on the dangers and the tyrannical actions they have chosen to take with regards to our children. Back in September, I came up here, and Christie tried to embarrass me, asking me to put on a mask, and I told her, no way. And then, following medical journals, I brought to the Board's attention, and they were from the American Journal of Infectious Control and so on, and I won't go through them since I have a limited time. To date, I have yet received a response from any member of the Board regarding any of these findings, nor was any parent given the information of the vast amount of evidence showing the contrary narrative to MSM. I have also sent a tremendous amount of documentation to Mr. Gray Young, who is the student's life director. He too has ignored my emails, which is fantastic for me because it makes my case in court stronger for negligence. This shows gross negligence and endangerment of our children. It is clear that politics and perception is what valued on this school board. Fort Mill School District has chosen to receive extra fundings from agencies and foundations, corrupt government officials who choose to uphold CDC guidelines. But the CDC is a for-profit organization, no elected officials, and receives private funding from places like the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, which also invests in the creation of vaccines. Furthermore, the CDC owns several vaccine patents, as well as patents for actual viruses, proving that indeed, this was planned. Natural occurring viruses cannot be patented. Not only has Christie Spears shown gross negligence and endangerment of our students, but she has, as well as the entire Board, have showed a lack in basic intelligence and common sense. The CDC, as well as Dr. Fauci, have been windshield wipers going back and forth on information recommendations and statistics, including but not limited to the massive change in COVID cases and deaths last year. If the Board just took a little bit of time, it would be good, but if not, they don't want to. So anyway, recall, School Board, petitions online, please go and sign it. Woo-hoo! Thanks. You work for us, remember. You don't, we don't work for you, you work for us.
We work for people that are in the school district.
Um, the next speaker that I have a card for is Joanne Walker.
Sweet Jesus, I don't know how to follow that. Joanne Walker, you have my address. I apologize for the virulent anger that just came out of that face there. I just want to, I don't have that much to say. I just want to just remind y'all, please follow science, follow the CDC recommendations. And I mean real science, like, like actual, non-debunked, um, peer-reviewed science, please. I am a parent of three children, um, in Springfield Elementary and Springfield Middle. Recognize that we need to care for one another. It's not just that your kid isn't at risk, so you don't need a mask. My kid is at risk, and... I believe the rule was that you should not be outbursting, and you should also not be yelling at the people who are speaking, so zip it. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you nicely to let her finish her time. I'm gonna ask you nicely to let her finish her time, or I will ask the officer to remove you. All right.
This may not have worked at the Capitol, it's not gonna work here either, so...
We're gonna, we're gonna recess.
My kid is at risk, and it would be nice if the so-called Christian community that we have here in Fort Mill were going to be their brother's keeper and do what's best for all. A mask is a small gesture we should all make. Yes, McMaster has just placed, he just said, "No mandates," but he also follows that up immediately with the caveat that South Carolinians will do the right thing, and that he says the right thing to do is everybody knows they need to wear masks and keep socially distanced. I'm just begging you. I've kept my kids home this year because, because we live with my elderly mother and my father who just had a heart attack. I'm sorry, are you, are you sad that he's not dead?
Enough. This is the last time I will ask, or you'll all be removed.
I hope to God you don't listen to this nonsense with the QAnon bullshit that we have going on here. Good night.
Officer, clear the room, please. Well, I, I have another card, but this one says, "Teacher feedback," and we don't receive teacher feedback in, in... You're reading a teacher's letter. Okay.
My name is Caitlin Boyle. I live in the school district, you have my address, and I wanted to read a letter from a concerned teacher at one of your high schools. "As a teacher, I am very concerned about the mask mandates in our school. Let me skip over the obvious gripes related to the persistent discomfort of mask-wearing and jump right to the core issue. It is a terrible hindrance to effective teaching and learning. Trying to talk to students for any period of time with something covering your mouth is challenging. When you have to speak for more than an hour at a time for the duration of an entire school day, it becomes a grueling task, and the teaching consequently suffers. There is also the problem of trying to understand students' muffled responses when they answer questions. Getting students, especially teenagers, to speak in front of peers is already a challenge. Now try to decipher the words spoken by a mummery, mumbling, self-conscious teenager with a layer or two of cloth over his and her face. And then the trouble becomes with not being able to read facial expressions. I never realized until this school year how much I use my students' facial expressions to adjust my teaching mid-lesson. I can only see half their faces, and unfortunately, that is not enough. It's not enough for me to see confusion unfolding over their faces as they grapple with the new content. Yes, I can see raised eyebrows, but a troubled grimace I cannot. I could understand and appreciate a cautious approach back in August of the school year when there was so much uncertainty surrounding the reopening of schools. But now, after virus numbers are declining and vaccines have been available to all the staff who want them, I do not see the need for a mask mandate. Why can we not issue an, and, I'm sorry, why can we not institute a policy of optional mask use for the teachers as well as the students? Masks are without question impacting the learning in a negative way, and many of my peers agree. But like me, they are afraid to voice their concerns for fear of repercussions. Please consider revising the mask mandate. I want to be able to speak to my students without talking through cloth. I want to be able to see my students' faces and answer their questions. I want to see their expressions, and I want my students to be able to see my face when I smile at them. I believe that everyone will be the better for it. Thank you."
Do you want to address anything about, do you want to address anything about the next step?
Okay, yeah, I can, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That concludes our public participation. You guys are welcome to stay, but I am gonna ask you to stay orderly during the rest of the meeting, or we'll have to ask you to leave. And we've got some other business that we've got to get to. I don't know if you wanted to follow that with anything else about. As I mentioned, we, we just got this information 30 minutes ago. I don't know exactly what the, the plans will be next.
We just received, at 5:30, we just received a...
Okay, enough. Enough. Enough!
At 5:30, at 5:30, we received a, a, uh, press release from the Governor's Office to the superintendents. He said what Ms. Spears led off with, that he's removing, he's making masks optional. He said he will send out a, uh, a form for parents to sign, so you can opt your child out. So you can, uh, so you can opt your child out. As soon as we received that, we, I, I have no other information. The, the newspaper was a little, uh, article was, was not clear to me, but the, he didn't say exactly when it would start. I assume it started immediately, but I don't know. But as soon as we get that, we'll send it out, and I expect to get it, uh, today, or, I mean, tonight or tomorrow. We, before this came up, we were, um, real optimistic, and now I'm even more optimistic that, that, uh, we will be able to start, uh, after the school year, and particularly in August with, without the mask and without the screens. That's our plan. It's been our plan all along. We've, we've simply been compelled to follow, uh, state agencies and arms of government. That's, that, we take, we put our hands on the Bible and swear to be Board members and swear to be superintendents based on following the state laws of South Carolina, so that's all we've simply done. We would love to, many of us would love to not have the mask in place, but we, we, we can't, feel like we can't pick the laws we want to break and not break. So it looks, uh, very promising going forward as far as, uh, is, is what you're advocating for. So that was, that's really, that just came at 5:30.
Okay, our next, um, our next item on the agenda is, um, staff reports. The first of which is a financial update from Ms. Lordo.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I'm gonna start with discussing the monthly financial report, which was in your packet. It is as of March 31st, nine months into this fiscal year. Our total revenues were $129,516,95, and expenditures to date were $111,170,186. So we were cash flow positive of $18.3 million, as we would expect. Increase same time last year was $16.2 million. Total property tax collections to date were $60,57,291, and the good news is that's 98.4% of our budgeted property tax revenue. Compared to same time last year, we had collected 96.6. So we're slightly ahead of our collection percentage, which, um, definitely gives me some relief to know we've made it through this unique pandemic season and the uncertainty of the economy and tax collections. I think we will definitely be on track with our budget plan for this year to finish this fiscal year. And just a little detail, um, as we would expect, real property taxes now have been primarily collected, so they've dropped off, um, and they were, uh, only $402,000, which you would expect for this month. Vehicles, once again, we're at $1.1 million in vehicles. So we're tracking anywhere from $850,000 to a million every month now in vehicle property tax collections. Impact fees, um, when I wrote my notes for this yesterday, we had collected $39,946,000. I saw the report this afternoon for the end of the day yesterday, and we have now exceeded $40 million in impact fees. We had about 11 units paid yesterday, so we collected over $100,000 yesterday. That is single-family units of 1,602 and multifamily units of 898. So total units now are, are exactly 2,500. That was before I put the numbers in for close of business yesterday. Just of interest, April and May to date, we had 53 new homes that came on and 21 apartments. So we are continuing to see that steady growth reflected in the impact fees.
And I'm assuming you're gonna talk here in a second about the budget process?
I am.
Because you're gonna talk about what we're gonna do with some of that money?
Yes. So first, let me, if, we'll move on into the budget update, unless you have any questions about, as of March. Okay. A quick update on where, uh, the House and Senate stand. You've probably been keeping up with this. As I have I, the Senate ends their session this week. The bad news is no budget will be passed. They will be called back in June, um, more than likely, the first week of June, June 8th through the 10th. They also have the next two weeks, um, scheduled as well, if needed. The, um, revenue projections for the state of South Carolina will be updated by the Board of Economic Advisers on May the 20th. And what, uh, we're being told is that's a big reason why they're not gonna rush, or they did not rush and try to pass a budget plan this week, is they want to wait on those updated revenue projections, May 20th. The House Ways and Means Committee now may or may not meet prior to June 8th. And whether or not they meet will somewhat dictate the flow of how this is gonna work now, from House Ways and Means to the House Amendment, back to the Senate. But ultimately, it will come together with the Conferees, with Conference Committee. But neither House nor Senate have appointed their Conferees as of today. So we're waiting to see who may get appointed to the Conference Committee to discuss the final budget, based on the May 20th updated revenue. It, it's been a very drawn-out process this year. Normally, we are much further ahead on the revenue side this year. But a couple things on the revenue. Tonight, I would really like to, um, kind of bring the expenditures up for discussion and, and kind of share with you where we are as administration. But let me give you a few updates on the revenue. Yesterday, we received the letter from the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office on the millage. So the letter indicated that the growth population here in Fort Mill increased 4.21% from 2019 to 2020, 4.21%. To that, you are allowed to add the Consumer Price Index, the CPI increase of 1.23. So the total millage cap, the millage increase, is 5.45%, which is 11.1 mills. So 11.1 mills is now the number that I'm working with to bring to you as a recommendation for the budget next year. The, um, as of not more than an hour ago, I received the Senate projections. So I have not had a chance to fully digest those numbers. We were hoping they were gonna come in last week, and they did not. So I have received those, and I will be working through those numbers. I did a quick, 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 quick run-through, and I, I think I can make this work. I think I can make this work. I'll just share that with you, without giving you any numbers.
You being encouraged.
With the 11.1 mills, yes, yes.
That's so good to hear, because she was not speaking that kind of optimism about a week ago.
I was not, I was not. So, um, that will be my next project, obviously, starting first thing in the morning, is working through those numbers. The, um, also on the revenue side, um, from where we were two weeks ago, we have now received approval on our SRR2 application, and I'm gonna share with you in a moment what the details of what we submitted, but we have been approved on SRR2. And we have now received our allocation amount for SRR3, and SRR3 is $5,120,594. We are still, as an administration, discussing our, um, plan for those funds. There's actually a webinar tomorrow sponsored by the South Carolina School Boards Association, I believe it's tomorrow. There's also a webinar next week sponsored by SCASA. And so I want to hear both of those discussions. There are a few restrictions on SRR3 that were not on SRR2. So I want to make sure as a district, we understand those restrictions before we fully commit to what our plan is. But I'll share with you kind of the things we've discussed that we may want to put in our plan for SRR3. And, uh, I had shared in my memo to you, I have now received the Senate projections, and I received the funding, it's built in on the teacher salary step, so that's good news. As a, a couple other small things, and then we'll get into the expenditures. I did want to share that, um, as you know, we are insured by the, um, South Carolina School Boards Insurance Trust, which is somewhat a self-funded plan by its member districts. And, um, I'm very excited to share with you that, um, and let me read, they did a nice little brochure on this, but they are basically, um, giving back some of their fund balance, um, to their membership. And they said, "Throughout this unprecedented year, the COVID-19 pandemic has caused our members to experience unexpected and increased expenses. We recognize these difficulties and know that districts are searching for ways to reduce cost, and this is why we're happy to announce that the Schizbit Board of Directors has voted to issue loyalty appreciation coupons." The whole program, they are gonna give back a total of $5 million. And it, the calculations were based on, um, historical premiums paid, longevity with the insurance trust, and claims over the last five years. All of those factors went into the calculation. But I was, I also sit on the Board. I represent the South Carolina School Boards, uh, School Business Officials Association on the Board. So I, um, was privy to a lot of the discussion, and the Board collectively was very pleased that the, it, the way that the insurance trust has been managed has afforded this opportunity. And I think that's one of the benefits for us as a district in working, continuing to work with them for our insurance needs. This is tied to workers' comp. They also insure us for property casualty and liability. But our coupon amount issued to Fort Mill schools, and this will go against our premium next year, is $87,179. So we were very happy to, um, receive our, our amount.
That is much better than my all-state rebate.
Yes. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that with you this evening. Also, Tammy Welch, who is our Director of Student Nutrition, asked me to share that, um, it is now confirmed that the USDA has, um, extended the free meal program for next school year for all students. And, um, we will be sending something out to all of our parents about that. The caveat is that she's still asking families that qualify to do a free and reduced application to do that, because there's other benefits tied to that. And so she will be working on an announcement, a notification to send out to families to let them know, um, to still do that if they feel like they qualify for next school year.
Ms. Lordo, um, I'm guessing we're also gonna continue some form of a feeding program over the summer, like we did last year?
We will, yes. Yes, we will. It's a short summer, so it'll be a short program, but yes, yes, we will.
And it would be, anyone would be eligible for that as well now?
Correct, correct, yes. And she, typically what they do is they will have one site for pickup. Usually, it's one of our high schools with the larger kitchens, where they prepare and package the meals from that site. So, okay, so as far as the budget on the expenditures, as I thought... So, okay, so as far as the budget on the expenditures, as I thought through, how could I best share with you the administration's thoughts and recommendations? And I know that several of you had comments at the last board meeting about wanting to make sure that we were, as a district, addressing the priority needs for all of our students, especially going into the year after the year that we've had this year, with some recovery needed for some of our students. And so I decided to come up with this diagram. I think in, this year going into next year, we talk a lot about there's different buckets of money. I think this is very evident. There are different buckets or pots of money that we're going to draw from next year, really the next two years. And if you look at this, many of these items could move between these boxes. And it's been somewhat of a puzzle to match the needs to where we felt like it fit the dollars in an appropriate manner. So sometimes there's not a rhyme or reason why it went into one pot and not the other. We were just trying to make sure we were covering the priorities that you've seen on the district's summary request from all the principals and departments that I had sent you that totaled, I believe, $20 million. We're very pleased to have the opportunity and have this ESER funding. But we are keeping in mind that these are non-recurring dollars. But the good news is, as you can see from my diagram, we are able to cover two years. So we will not have to immediately pull all of these items into the general fund this time next year. We will have two years and it will be in a year where we won't be opening a school. It has been very, I'll be honest, financially, it has been quite a hit for us, opening two elementary schools and then the plan for opening a middle school next year. That's a big hit on our, a budget our size, three schools right in a row. So this will give us a little bit of a breather to be able to start the plan for shifting some of these items to the general fund in a year where we're not opening a new school. But I'm going to start with the general fund. These items you have seen, except for, I have gone through, we have ran the calculations on, after the Senate passed their budget with the $1,000 salary increase. We ran that across all of our payroll. That will increase the state minimum teacher salary schedule from $35,000 starting to $36,000. And then we will apply our 15% local supplement on top of that. The, there may be a few other small number changes as I've come across things, but I have not added or taken away any categories on that general fund list from what you have seen previously. We have started looking at the actual cost. On the two largest items are 40 new classroom teachers as well as our opening of Forest Creek Middle School. We are working on now the exact position cost now that the majority of those positions have been filled. And so I will be updating this for those final numbers with the new hires and where they're actually coming in on the salary schedules. But the total of these items, and this is kind of what we call our, you know, priority one for the general fund, is 13.8 million. I was previously at about 9.8 million based on the House Ways and Means version of the budget. So I'm at 13.8. And when I look at that and I look at the numbers I got an hour ago and I look at the 11.1, I'm working on making that work. Does that make sense? Any questions about where we are with those numbers?
I have a question about, so the classroom teachers, the number that we projected at the time was 40.
Correct.
And what we've been marching down the path of hiring and great progress.
We've hired, yes.
We are in, I don't know, week two, three of re-enrollment, if that's the right term to use. You know, I'm not sure that everybody trying to listen actually heard some of your comments at the end about, you know, I know there have been questions about next year and, and some potential hesitancy for people to re-enroll, not knowing what next year looked like. I, I think what I heard you say is that we're very encouraged based on everything, not even just today's information, but the information that we've received over the last couple of weeks that both DEHEC and Department of Ed and obviously the governor, we, we expect to come out with some significantly relaxed requirements.
Yeah, the way I understand, the way I understand the, the executive order, and I hadn't seen it, but just had it mentioned in the, in the press release from the governor's office. With, with schools starting back now without the mask, we will be starting in August without the mask. So I would encourage all, and that's, that's barring anything happening, I guess, nationally or statewide. So there's that caveat, I mean, right, based on what we know today and based on the executive order. But I hadn't, again, I haven't read it. So I would encourage all parents who may have been hesitant to enroll to do that. And the reason I say that is we, we need to know now about any major increases. I, I think we've got our number pretty firm because we built in a little bit. But we, we need, it'll help us, so that'll prevent students enrolling in October and November and us not being able to hire enough staff because we've already hired the teachers.
Or for that matter, the week before school starts in August because the teachers will be hired at that point in time.
That's right.
And the classes will just grow because we won't be able to hire additional teachers.
There's not a, there won't be an opportunity to just add teachers all year. There, there, there won't be that opportunity.
So we're still marching towards this number because we believe that to be the right number. It sure would be nice to reinforce the number with, with our registrations and enrollments.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and let me mention here so I don't forget. If you look over under the ESER 3, which is the pink box, you'll see that we have eight elementary classroom teachers to serve the Fort Mill Virtual Academy. Those are actually current FTEs in the general fund budget. And working with that enrollment for the Virtual Academy, we have decided that we're going to pull those out. We're going to fund those through ESER 3. And that's going to free up funds for special ed. Special ed was an area that we had not been able to come up with a plan to address in the general fund. And so that was one of the reasons why we're moving the cost of the Virtual Academy to ESER 3 to enable us, but it's not a new cost, so it's not in my blue box. But we are going to use those FTEs. I believe a lot of those have already been hired or posted. Working with Dr. Maziarz, she's very happy about that. So it's a combination of teachers, special ed teachers, and special ed assistants to serve the growth in that area for next year.
Now, I see you've got those for two years.
Correct.
We don't necessarily know what the following year's Virtual Academy
We don't, we don't. So it is just best guess right now.
The money is there to do it for a second year if
Correct, if we needed to, if we needed to. So going down to, let me come back to the orange section. So let's talk about ESER funds. The first pot of money, if you start with the little yellow box, was our CARES Act ESER 1. And if you remember, our allocation was $633,220, very small amount. And we primarily used that for PPE during that time. PPE, we used it to provide the internet access for families who did not have internet access. And we used it for a couple of other technology items I'm going to talk about. But we have just one small piece left. We had in that position when we added the Coordinator of Technology Integration and E-Learning position to help support the virtual students on the technology side. We've elected to go ahead and fund that position, and this is just an estimated cost. We've elected to go ahead and fund that position one more year and that will close out our ESER 1 plan. So it's already, it was in the plan for the first year and we're going to extend it. We were able to save, I believe, in the area of some other supplies. And so we're going to be able to fund that position on our ESER 1. If not, we would have had to pull that into the general fund for next year. But we're going to go ahead and elect to use our ESER 1 funds in that manner to finish out that program with that position. Any questions about that one? The second box is the one that I mentioned, we just got approval. This is our ESER 2. And our allocation was $2280,018. And, and just as a reminder, these allocations are based on Title I appropriations. So across the state, we're very low, we, we, I don't know if we received the lowest amount, but you've probably seen in the media, districts are out there and they've received millions of dollars. And they have very elaborate plans for how they're going to use their money. We're very grateful to have some, but ours is this $2.2 million. So in that plan, we submitted to add two additional mental health counselors, two additional assistant principals at the middle school level at our two largest middle schools, an additional assistant principal at Cotabah Ridge High School, an additional accountant position, which was allowed in this funding to help manage all of this. There's a lot of accounting compliance work that has to be done with these federal funds. And so we're going to add an additional accountant position in the finance department. We're going to add three English language learner teachers. And the reason that that amount changes in year two is I just had to balance this plan in total. And so in year two, we would need to move two of those English language learner teachers as ELL teachers to the general fund. But that's why that amount is different. We are also going to add an elementary English, English Language Arts Coordinator in the Curriculum Department. That was the number one request of all the elementary principals, was to add that additional support position in curriculum to help their schools. The next item is a secondary math coordinator district-wide. And then the next two items, let me see if I can explain this. So these are technology-related, Google for Education and Class Link Renewal. Both of those items were funded this year either out of the state coronavirus relief funds or Class Link was in the ESER 1. So for next year, I'm going to pay for that down in the orange box under State EIA Aid. And then the next year, I'm going to move it back to ESER 2. So when I said this is definitely a puzzle of how to fit this all together, I think those two items are a great example. Those are licensing, technology licensing contracts. And I, from what I hear, both of those programs have been extremely successful and that the teachers want to continue those going forward. The, also I had mentioned in ESER 1, we were covering the hotspots or the home wifi for the students without internet. We are going to put that in ESER 2 for next year. And that's our plan, just to cover that one more year. And then we have 17,000 of just some other school support items. So that our total for year one would be 1.2 million. Our total for year two would be slightly over a million. And that balances to our total allocation of $2280,000 for ESER 2. Any questions about that? Okay, so ESER 3, we've started talking about. And what we have put on our list so far is the high schools and middle schools. Dr. Wakesness has been working with them on doing some expanded summer programs for recovery this summer and then continuing into the fall with more after-school opportunities for additional assistance for students. So each middle and high school has, we've given them an allocated budget and they have been developing their specific plans. So we've given the go-ahead for planning for the summer program and the after-school programs for the fall. The next item is Alex Math Program. That's a replacement for a program we currently have, currently have. And I'm going to let technology speak, I mean, our curriculum speak to these in just a moment. And then the Fort Mill Virtual Academy had requested a guidance counselor. We felt like that would be a great fit for ESER 3. Because I don't think I mentioned, but 20% of ESER 3 has to be used for recovery or learning loss is the terminology. So when we submit our application, we will be tying all of these items into that, that category to meet our 20%, which is about a million, slightly over a million dollars of our $5 million. And then Sugar Creek Elementary had requested a K-1 interventionist, which is similar to a position we have at Riverview Elementary currently. And then the last large piece, I think we had shared with you that Mr. Raminick is working and looking into products related to indoor air quality improvements. We are going to develop a plan to do that district-wide. They are testing some units in a couple of classrooms now before we make that commitment because it will, it will be several million dollars. So this is just an estimate of what we think it could cost to roll that out district-wide, but we think that's very important going forward.
This is district, I mean, again,
It would be district-wide.
The intent of whatever this number is, is to do it district-wide.
It would be district-wide. It would be district-wide. So we'll, as we get further into that process, we will share more about that with you.
I had the, the ESER 3 monies in the application and in the requirements. It, it, it really implies that you need to spend a certain portion on the, on the learning loss, of course, but on, on air quality in the three, that's
All of the, the information we've received so far is they're strongly encouraging districts to use these funds for this type of facility improvements related to helping to mitigate any future spread.
Not just of COVID, but
Any, any disease, yes, yes. So that so far is what we're thinking with ESER 3. As I said, we wish we had twice as much funding, but we're trying to just apply the highest priorities to these funds that we are receiving. And then State EIA Aid to Districts. This is something that we currently receive. In the Senate plan, they are increasing that allocation to districts for next year. And I feel like that will stay. But these are actually some carryover funds. And what we are doing is we're going to go ahead and prepay some of these contracts for next year to utilize our carryover funds. Several of these curriculum items you have seen on prior years, year-end transfers, where we've never been able to build these into the recurring budget. But we're going to go ahead and use our State EIA Aid to Districts to fund, as I mentioned, the Class Link, the Google for Ed, and then Curriculum, the Classroom Mosaic, Enrich, and Phonics. The large new item that we're adding is Schoolzilla. And I'm going to let curriculum speak to the specifics because I think you'd be very interested in how that is going to aid in the recovery and the assessment. But we're going to go ahead and prepay these contracts. We're already in process of being invoiced by the vendors. And go ahead and utilize some of those carryover funds that the state allocated this year to help us towards next year. So I hope this has been helpful to kind of see it in a diagram format and kind of see the process that the leadership team, we've had many meetings about these items. I've told them, kind of, speak now forever, hold your peace. You know, if you don't, if you don't agree with something or you don't think that's the priority. But we, as a, as a group, came together and all agreed on all these various buckets of funding for next year. But I thought it was important, if I just showed you the general fund, I felt like you wouldn't get a good feel for what we were doing in all these other areas and how we were addressing the needs of the district and continuous improvement for next year.
And I'm encouraged to see some of the summer stuff because I know, you know, our, our results were good the other day, but that was also a blended number, right? And, and being able to reach the kids that for whatever reason, whether it was, you know, the virtual environment or just the, the masks, whatever it may be, that, that have just had some challenges this year and been able to kind of help them get caught back up is fantastic.
So I think curriculum, was somebody going to help me and speak about some of the things?
Well, Matt, Peter, do y'all have questions?
I have told you everything I know about these.
Some of the positions and things that we're doing with the S R two and the S R three funding, you know, the, the subscriptions and whatnot, that's all items that we intend to in the future will roll into our general fund.
Correct.
They're not something that we're just band-aiding for today, tomorrow, and because, oh, look, we've got monies in this direction or that direction.
Correct, absolutely.
So we're committing to them basically.
We're committing to them. Several of these, we already have had, as I mentioned, we just are trying to use the best source of funding for next year or really the next two years to get us past this period of the large hit on the general fund from opening the new schools. Then I think we'll be in a little bit better position if we continue to have the growth with students, growth with property tax assessment, where we can then absorb some of this.
Well, and the reality is it's four year, four schools in three years.
Correct, true, yes. We're, we're still feeling the high school coming on. Yes, yes.
Continuing on, so, yes.
Yes.
Good.
So.
Questions?
Do y'all want to hear any comments or are y'all good or?
I've asked my questions. I'm, I'm good. Anybody else have? Okay.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
And, and you'll keep us posted timeline wise on what happens next. We've got, we've got another meeting at the end of this month. We've got June eighth, which we earmarked.
Correct. So we will, so at the next meeting, I'll have the revenue picture firmed up as best. We, we will not have a state budget. So my recommendation is that you move forward and you pass a local budget. And if we should have to do an amendment this summer, we can. I think we'll, I think we'll be close, but we can always, you always have the ability to do an amended budget. I will have to go ahead prior to the next meeting and publish the public hearing notification. So I will send you information about what is going to be published for that purpose. But we will not have 15 days, by law, we have to publish 15 days in advance of the public hearing. We will not have 15 days between the May, the 25th and June the 8th.
And so we have to, the law requires us to pass the budget by June 30, I believe, in the code.
Correct, correct.
And, and we can go back and do it amended. So that's why we have to rush it out before they even approve it in.
So we have to approve it before the end of June and you have to notice it 15 days before you approve it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Our meeting is on the 8th, 15 days before that is sometime in the middle to end of May and you're going to have to go ahead and notice it at that point.
Because we won't, now that we have these Senate projections, we won't have any other, we know what the local revenue property tax can be, we will not have any additional state information by the public hearing date.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have a quick first reading of a policy. We talked last meeting about the school day.
Yes, we did.
And the hours, which we didn't actually find the hours to be in any policy.
Right, as you recall, we, I was thinking the hours, we changed that a few years. At, at one time, we had the hours as part of the policy. What we found out, it, it, it kind of tied us down particularly on a, not that it's, it's not a good idea to, to publish them, but they, we're growing, we're modifying times frequently, more frequently than we had because of transportation, because of just the road system here. So we were, we were proposing that we revise, revise the policy to ensure that the district may consult with parents and faculty and obtain board approval before varying the length of school day. Not trying to, not trying to be non-transparent here, just saying like things like the I-77 shutdown, those, there are things that are coming up now that we need to be more nimble instead of having it written in policy. So got Peter, Dr. Olinger, Peter to, to stick with the proposed box of times for next year. And y'all may have questions about those. And I think we, you tried to clear up some of the questions that some members had. So that'll be like a, you, you will approve that as an action item, but the, and.
But really, all you're doing with the policy is saying that you're, we're, we're going to change the word to be May so that the administration has the flexibility.
A little more nimble on our page.
If you, if you need it.
And, and, and you don't need the hours posted in, in the, you'd be changing the policy every year is what you'd be doing.
So does the May modify the, the parent and faculty input?
And the board.
And the board input or just the parent and faculty?
If, if there's any major change and we got plenty of time, you're going to have the input. I'm talking about, this gives us the ability to be flexible on these, like a year like this year where you wouldn't be running up and back, back and forth approving, but we'll get input.
Especially because it does require two readings.
That's right.
And so if it, if it says must, then we got to have two meetings before they can make an emergency change.
And, and changing, changing the start time is pretty serious for, pretty important to a lot of people in their work schedule. So that's why that's in there. But this gives us a little more ability to, to react.
And remind me, if I'm mistaken, Ms. McGinn, you might have to, because we kind of looked at this real recently, Ms. McGarrity. Our, our board policy start dates where staff is concerned and whatnot is administrative rule as opposed to actual policy? And to piggy, piggyback on that, administrative rule does not require board approval. It is administrative rule. So it, it is full circle here.
I think when you approve the calendar, you approve all that.
Right.
Is what you do. That, it's a different date every year. Once you approve, the first day and the teachers come back.
So that's the one word change that you're recommending in this policy? And it's, today's just a first reading, but that's what it's all about from my understanding is in trying to find where we thought they were actually listed in policy, didn't find that, but did find this and felt like it offered.
We will always get input, Brian. It's, it's just in, in times of like this year, it would, it would have really slowed us down to have to do that.
Good. All right, so that was the one that had the first reading. I don't know if there's anything else on that, but there are a whole bunch of action items. Lost my place, there we go. About other policies that, that do need action tonight. We don't take action on that one until next meeting.
That's right.
Good evening. We did suspend, these are policies that we suspended at the beginning of the year, seems like yesterday, but it was actually in August, I believe. So I'm just going to go through these real quick. The first one is IC School Year. We suspended that due to, it currently stated 190 days and we went 195. So, and for teacher days and then 180 for student and it was 185. IG Curriculum Development, Adoption and Review. IIB Class Size, which was the class sizes of virtual would exceed those, those class sizes recommended there. And then the last one, this is one we need to probably just, maybe y'all would probably want to discuss. We can either suspend it or, excuse me, reinstate it or we could, we could keep it suspended or we could, and keep it suspended and write a new policy if we wanted to do that. But this is IGN DAA Distance Online and Virtual Education. In the policy, it states that students in grades nine through 12 may earn a maximum of six units of academic credit. And obviously with our virtual program, they are earning more, so.
So you could either make a recommended change or you could rewrite and bring it as a.
I would, I would recommend keeping, keeping it suspended for now and then we can look at maybe developing a new policy with our virtual school program.
That was, I had noticed that and it even lists the following circumstances, none of which say pandemic.
Right.
Or anything even closely resembling what we've been through the last year. So I, I don't think we should reinstate it because then we would be breaking it. But I do feel like if we're going to continue to offer any, an ongoing virtual program, we need the policy to be reflective of.
Right.
However, that is going to be run, right? It seems like we need a virtual or a distance learning policy. I just don't know that it's written this, that the way this one is written applies to the future.
What is the, what's the current thinking on the ongoing nature of the virtual academy?
Well, the numbers will probably dictate what will happen in going forward. We had, what, 5,300 kids this year and it down to 500. We'll have some decisions to make as to whether or not this board will have decisions to make as to whether or not you want to continue it. I, I would say based on that trend, the numbers are going to be even lower next year. So, you know, you could decide, some districts are deciding not to offer a virtual program because there's South Carolina connection, you know, there's a program. Some are, are combining districts. I noticed in the Charleston area, they're combining districts. So it's trending, trending in a negative way right now, but I think we look at the numbers at the time and, and make the call.
I know the, the state seems to be disincentivizing local school districts from offering it.
Yeah, right. So with that, they did leave it in there at 5%. So that, you know, it, it, it looks like it's probably going to be real lessened or go, going away, but I hate to say that without knowing what, what our needs will be this time next year. We're under the, we're at 2.3.2%, I believe. We were under the five, so we'll get funding, right? That's what we were concerned about.
And with, even without a, a true ongoing virtual academy, if you want to call it that, some of the pieces in here, I mean, there are some scenarios like the credits for, for high school because there are some scenarios that do need to.
That'd be the advantage in having some options.
Correct.
Determines how that should play out. So we'll need this portion to either be reinstated exactly as is or amended if we feel like it needs to be different.
Right.
Right?
It does provide another option for kids in, in trouble discipline wise too, when we have to expel. They can pick up credit this way. So there's some reason, there's some pros and cons.
All right, so we have an action item in front of us. So I think I'm looking for a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to reinstate policy IC, IG and IIB.
Second.
So we have a motion as second to reinstate policies IC School Year, IG Curriculum Development and Adoption Review and IIB Class Size. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now, these are not all of the policies that we suspended.
Correct.
But we're leaving the other ones in the current state until we know a little bit more about the, the future of a handful. I don't remember what some of the other ones were, but just like this distance learning, we're going to leave that one.
Correct.
As is for a little.
And I think we mentioned the ones you did vote for would be effective July 1.
Right.
Right, or next term.
Right. And we'll get to work on that virtual, looking at the amending or creating a new policy.
We're going to take no action on IJNDAA, which will mean just by definition, it will stay suspended.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Where are we? Superintendent's report.
Okay, start with the calendar events. Of course, the, I, I think we were, the board, just from a little feedback I've gotten from several of you, was very pleased today with our, our visits and the method we use. We didn't infringe on instructional time and had, had visited four schools. So next year, we'll try to, we'll try to look at how we do that. As, as the public may not know, it's one of the board requirements to visit all the schools at least once a year. And we hadn't been able to do that because of the pandemic. So we did like a little drive by today on, on a couple of, couple of three, four schools. And particularly helpful to new board member, I think, Mr. Bodie, just to, to see what you're voting on and as I think C. Carter mentioned last time, see, see it in action. So I thought that went well. Next year, we, we're going to 20 schools as you are aware. And, and so we'll have to crunch up the time. So maybe we can do four schools, five months, you know, we'll, this will make it doable.
And I know a lot of times, some of the folks that are in the audience with us normally go with us, but obviously didn't seem prudent this year. But, but for y'all's benefit and, and anyone else, it was, it was very exciting because other than some desk shields and some masks on faces, it looked like our schools. And they were beautiful inside, they're decorated with artwork, the kids are walking down the hall, changing, going from here to there. They're happy, the teachers are teaching, there's some classrooms that are empty because all the faces are on a screen instead, because it's a virtual screen. You know, I, kudos to everybody that's been involved with this crazy school year because they, they have, you know, they, they learned new technology on the fly, the kids learned it, the teachers learned it, the parents probably learned it. And what I saw are a whole bunch of happy, energized teachers and students excited about, you know, five or six more weeks of school and then a break because it's been a long year. But it was very exciting to me to see what was going on.
More than half weeks if you count.
Who's counting?
Not to be exact.
Not that a teacher told me.
I, I truly think that, um.
Smiling eyes, smiling faces, even, even with a mask, even with a shield, you could see smiling eyes. You had, and then it was, whether it was a high school kid or it was a kindergartner, you had kids that were giving you the waves and they were so excited that they had visitors and, and it was just.
They were engaged.
They were very engaged when they were learning and doing.
I need to note that we're one of the districts, we're, we're one of the leading districts that have, in, in, in regards to being back full five day faced for the whole year. So, and, and, and we're proud of that, but I think you saw that today in those smiling faces. I think they're always glad to be back and, and school seems real again to them.
I mean, they were sitting further apart at lunch than they probably would have otherwise, but.
Yeah.
Talk to their friends at lunch, so.
All right, so going on down, the board meeting coming up on the 25th, the Memorial Day holiday on the 31st, we're getting near the end here. Then the board meeting and the budget here, public hearing for the budget on the 8th. Then we have our graduations, you see them listed there all at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, the 9th.
Which is a virtual day for the rest of the high school kids.
That's correct, correct. We need to add that. Then the rain dates there. Then the last day for high school, the 11th, which is a half day, the teacher work day the following Monday, last day for elementary and middle, the 18th, and the teacher work day the 21st. Are there any other dates that I might be of import?
The, the proms, if you want to call them that, are scheduled for the 4th of June, which I think it's kind of funny because I, as I was writing this down, the, the senior parade, I don't know if you guys remember that last year, T G K hosted a senior parade for any of our graduates, not just for senior, for T G K kids, it was any of our graduating seniors. It is the next morning. Well, you see how that, because it was already scheduled for the 5th, but anyway. And then Celia reminded me, we do have the Tech Dowling Memorial Golf Tournament on June the 24th as well. And I believe registration is open, although I know they're getting a lot of teams already signing up and looking forward to that fundraiser.
Yeah, not, not many people hate golf, but that'll be fun.
My slot is reserved.
On the calendar, we have a board meeting on June the 22nd, which depending on how things are going, we may or may not hold at that point in time, but it is currently still out there on the calendar, I believe.
Well, it'll be our hope to pass the budget on the 8th and suspend the meeting on the 22nd, maybe possibly meet again in July, throw one in there to, to wrap up last minute before we start. So that's our hope. The, the problem with the 22nd meeting is several staff are gone to the conference at the beach and it's just, it's a lot of, yeah. Okay, going through enrollment update, this is that funny time when you're going to see that we, and it's rare, but it happens at the end of a session a lot. We grew, we, we transferred out 80 students and grew 74, but it's that time of year when you see some drop off due to all kinds of reasons. People going ahead and moving to where they're moving to, some kids maybe had some discipline issues. So you have, you have these fluctuating numbers, but 19, 16, 929. And that's, that's before you, you don't have the, the decima graduates in there. So it's really an, actually a higher number, but, so that's the bottom line on that one. And then on the attendance leaders, I had that out. I'm sorry, I, oh, here it is, right here. I knew I had it somewhere. We had, no, Pat, I had it.
I was going to say, here, I mean, can you look?
Oh, is it up on the?
I can read it for you.
Pull it up for me, please, I'm just.
Barely read it, but you could tell who the winner was on.
95, 96 and 97%.
Yeah, the, the district winner was Pleasantville Elementary, I believe.
Yes.
97, is that not right?
97 and 97.
Yes, yes. So, and then the, the other, the middle school was Pleasantville, so they're doing something. And then the, the high school was Nation Four, so I don't know about that side of town, but they sure came to school last month.
That's right.
Came to work. So that's a, that's pretty outstanding for this time of year, I believe. So I think kids are happy to be back in school, I believe.
Can I ask a question for point of clarification, I guess? And, and I know everything is so fluid with, you know, our state governor issuing his statement and whatnot as late as he did in the, the day slash evening. What does?
What does our dialogue to our schools and/or then from our schools to our teachers look like with regard to tomorrow? Because as we've seen this evening, um, the, I suppose there's a, a chance or an anticipation where, um, kids will be told, nope, the governor said, so you're not wearing it, you don't have to wear it and whatever. And so what is our?
Well, obviously, we just heard it at 5:30, we'll write it here. Hadn't had a chance to even think of that.
But tomorrow at 7 o'clock in the morning, some are going to be in the building.
I, I think, um, I, I, I think practically speaking, uh, it, we don't know exactly when it's going to start. I assume it's tomorrow. I would assume, uh, we would not push the issue with, with anybody. I, I, we got to make decisions on our staff. We, we've got to, we've got to read the order and flesh out things and, and then go from there. The order was pretty general in, in the, in the email that I got.
And in the order, it directs D H E C and South Carolina Department of Ed to work out the details, which I, I, I'm hoping, like you said, tomorrow, but I don't, I don't think it's been worked out tonight. The one thing that I read into it is we, if, if a student shows up, I mean, we don't know if they have parent permission or not without that form, so that, that's where it gets a little tricky, but.
Well, and, and SCASA and, and the School Board Association all are saying the same thing. I mean, this, every district in the state learned of this at 5:30.
Right.
We, we got a heads up about 3:30.
So it's our anticipation that we're going to stay pat at this point tomorrow until we've had time to review.
Well, that would be the, that would be, yeah, but I mean, I don't know how, you know. It seems to me we, it, it, we just need to read the, we need to read the language and make sure, particularly on staff. I don't know that I've seen anything addressed on staff and the mask. I assume it's optional for everybody, but again, I haven't read it. So we will, we will take the information like we do all information and, and abide by the law. You know? Which is what we've done the whole, the whole time.
Exactly. Anything else?
No, I think, I think we've said enough, unless you want to ask me something.
I thought, what I thought you were going to ask was different.
Oh, sorry.
Because I think the, the one thing that was, I did not read in my quick scan of it, was anything about changes to quarantine.
Right.
So along with questions about teacher implications that I didn't, it just said students in multiple places, so I don't know, is if it affects quarantine, and I, I think that's going to be a big question as well because of the, the current guidelines as they stand today, say, three feet plexiglass and a mask. And so that could have impacts there as well, so.
Dr. Schmose, do you have something you need to share with us?
Yeah, I, if.
Oh.
This is a highlighted section. Here, if you want to see.
Okay.
These two, right here and on the next.
This is what you call hot off the press, right?
Yeah, so that's what I was referring to. It says, "I hereby authorize South Carolina Department of Administration, in consultation with D H E C, to promulgate guidelines regarding the use of face coverings in state government offices, buildings and facilities." So.
And the next paragraph, the next page is, is the one that, we just got something from Robin Brown.
Okay, from Department of Ed?
Ryan Brown.
Brian Brown from Department of Ed.
Hey, we name people what we want.
Uh, that they are challenged because of the vagueness of the decree, but if you read the, the highlighted section when it talks about furthermore.
Do you want me to read it? Okay. Here we go. "I have determined that any remaining mandates issued by counties, municipalities or other political subdivisions of this state related to face coverings are no longer necessary or appropriate to address and mitigate the existing public health threats, and that circumstances are such that South Carolinians can make responsible choices and take appropriate precautions to protect themselves and their communities. For the foregoing reasons, to the extent any county, municipality or political subdivision of this state continues to impose any ordinance, order or other measure that requires the general public within its jurisdiction to wear a face covering and has relied in whole or in part on the undersigned's prior authorization or declarations of a state of emergency as part of the basis for imposing or for the duration of a face covering requirement, I have determined and do hereby declare that any such ordinance, order or other measure is invalid and preempted in accordance with Section 10(c) of this order." So that says the Department of Ed's guidelines no longer exist, and that's what you're saying, that the Department of Ed is, is, is questioning.
All right, let, let me read, let me clearly, here's a, here's a clear version of that. District superintendents, this evening, Governor McMaster issued executive order, has the number. Attached it has language pertaining to the use of face coverings in South Carolina public schools. Due to the lateness of the order, the legal ambiguities and the absence of a D H E C opt-out form, comma, the state face covering guidelines will remain in effect until such time as the agency has the opportunity to confer with legal counsel and provide further guidance. As noted in the order, face coverings requirements as they relate to students and staff of school buses have not changed as a result of the executive order. Okay, so there's your answer.
So, for those listening, we, we understand you, you want direction, and as soon as possible, probably tomorrow, we'll have that direction.
Yep, that's where we are.
All right, um, we are in need of a, of an executive session to discuss personnel recommendations. Could I please get a motion?
Motion to go into executive session.
All right, we are in executive session by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone, for joining. It was fun.